Today is Wednesday, September 24th, 2014. It's 10:00 a.m. Everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane?
Diane, you have eighteen exonerations, $5,931.59 for tax years 2013 and 14. Create statements for tickets number 9246, 9247, 9248, 9249, and 9250. Those are in the name of Janet Crawford and Catherine Schmelk. Fiduciary orders as of September 24th, and statement of services rendered for the fiduciary commissioners Armistead, Crane, and Stafford, minutes of September 10. Vouchers, General County Fund, $79,937.58. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $12,360.66. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,0748.61. Mason Dixon Park, $25. Mason Dixon Park Purchasing Card, $277.34. 911 Purchasing Card, $35.84. 911 Cash Fund, $521.44, for a total of $94,906.47. I have two budget revisions. One is moving $15,000 into the assessors line item for a part-time position, and the other is the sheriff's office. They have a check for $1,0754.70 for reimbursement of drug court participant supervision by home confinement. They're asking that these amounts be deposited into 705 home confinement budgets. $1,630 into salaries, $101.6 into FICA, and the remainder of $2364 into Medicare.
Move for approval.
Check it.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Renata?
Morning.
Morning.
The first is the HUD grant, City of Morgantown, for M.A.Y.S.P. for the month of August 2014, And we also have the JABG grant, also for M.A.Y.S.P. for the month of Septem-- I'm sorry, this is September, but it's actually for August. I'll have to change that. I won't have you sign this, I'll have you sign it later. $1,009.5460. Those are the two items.
Move ahead and approve it, Jen.
Okay, those are the two items for reimbursement today.
Move for reimbursement of both items.
I'll second that. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, we have two-- we have one grant application today with a resolution, and we also have a grant award notice that also has a resolution with it, so I will do the grant application first. As you know, I spoke to you some time ago about the courthouse facilities improvement authority grant, and we decided to go ahead and submit for funding this year. We're gonna be applying for a chiller unit to replace the existing one that's on top of the annex roof. The estimated total is $155,000. The cap on the funding for the courthouse improvement authority is $100,000, so anything above $100,000, we would have to put in unless they don't fully fund us. So we just have an application today and a resolution. Be resolved that the county commission hereby authorizes Eldon A. Callen, President Pro Tem of the Montague County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into contractual agreement with the West Virginia Office of Economic Opportunity to receive-- I'm reading the wrong one.
See what you did by saying Monday, it's got everyone off.
This is awful.
It threw everyone off, huh? My fault.
Cut that.
Me a cop.
Be resolved that the county commission hereby authorizes the President Eldon A. Callen, Pro Tem of the Montague County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into contractual agreement with the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to provisions of the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Fund program. So that's the grant application.
Move for the grant application and for the resolution.
Check it.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, we also have a grant award notice for the emergency solutions grant. This is one that we've already-- we've been using for many, many years. This is to fund programs for homelessness, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing for emergency situations like RDBIC. We've already actually submitted some requests for reimbursement, but they're just now getting the grant award to us, so we just have two copies of that that need signed, the award notice, the grant agreement, and then certifications. There's also a resolution with that, so I think there's like probably six signatures that need to sign.
Wow.
Be resolved that the county commission hereby authorizes Eldon A. Callen, President Pro Tem of the Montague County Commission, to act on its behalf to enter into contractual agreement with the West Virginia Office of Economic Opportunity to receive and administer funds pursuant to provisions of the emergency solutions grant program.
Move for approval of the grant application and the resolution.
Check it.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. They have a presentation at the Director Board meeting about making sure our courthouses are ADA compliant, handicapped accessible, all the different things, and they had done a survey, Supreme Court had done a survey, and actually, we're pretty far ahead in other counties in terms of handicapped accessibility, according to the survey. What I found interesting was a couple of the counties had applied for courthouse improvement for handicapped-- to add improvements for making handicapped accessible, and the courthouse improvement denied that as not as an urgent thing.
Yeah, it's actually kind of low on their list of priorities for whatever reason.
Yeah, I thought that was funny.
We have to do it for the road so we can't get Beechers Avenue done.
They have to do it for the road.
But we can't get Beechers--
But courthouse improvement, Supreme Court, I guess runs it. Is that who runs it? Supreme Court?
No, there's a board. The courthouse improvement authority, there's a board. Actually, Hershaw Mullins is on the board.
Yeah, but then in the Supreme Court, the one that establishes the standards, who established the standards? Or is it the legislature?
It's the legislature, I assume. I'm assuming.
I thought that was strange. I don't know if Sheriff's on that. Are you on that board, Sheriff?
I'm sorry, which one?
Yeah, courthouse improvement board. Who was on--
No, that's Steve Tan.
Steve.
Oh, okay.
I couldn't remember. That-- oh, your pen.
That's mine, too.
Which one?
This one. Isn't this mine?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Doyle.
We're bringing a house in Juana from Front Street to the complaint stage. We opened this May 30th, and they have tires on paper and everything, and we have gotten no response. So I'd like to show you some pictures. Matter of fact, can you see these, Bill?
Yeah, I can make them out.
Just take my word. I've never lied to you before.
It's just crystal ball. Sometimes it works well.
I think you're aware of these, Mr. Blum.
Oh, yes, I am. That was the outfit.
There's not a ladder on the roof, but no roof.
Well, it's in pretty bad shape. It's been on fire. Matter of fact, Tom was out there with me and was able to see this for himself.
Yep, they got a couch on the porch.
There's a boat in the yard, too, but I don't have nothing to pull it with.
Nowhere near the rip. They're waiting for the flood. It is really, really bad, and it's serious. I'm sure, you know, every type of problem possible. It's a half a burned house.
There's a boat.
Yeah.
I don't know. Oh, there's a boat. It's not a bad-looking boat.
Boat's worth more than a house.
That's also--
Probably, yeah.
That's also the road in the area which we went out about, the sewage problem that's going right in the culvert.
You didn't see the picture, right there?
Yeah.
So we need a motion in the second to send a letter for the complaint.
So move to Colleen about that dilapidated property.
Check it.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I just want to thank Jambi and Bobby for that. The people in Juana have been asking, and they're gonna be very pleased that we were able to move forward on it, and I will make sure they get that information.
Okay, thank you. All right, correspondence. Statement for services related to University Town Center Property Tax Development District.
Yeah, I have a letter from Tom Ammon, Steptoe and Johnson. This is asking for payment of an invoice in the amount of $221.25 to be taken from the University Town Center Property Tax District Administrative Fund.
Move for approval.
Check it.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Any more correspondence?
No.
Moving on to River Road, unfinished business, River Road Small Cities Block Grant. Oh, thank you. That was mine. It's a bagging order here. Bill, I need you here. You keep me in line when you're here. Now, look forward to you getting back soon.
Hopefully, that'll be next week, Eldon.
Well, I hope so. You're in my prayers.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
This is from Region Six Development Investment Board. The River Road Small Cities Block Grant was for extension of water service, I think, to around 100 and some houses out there, and they did a survey, and the way they did this survey, they sent out information, and then like less than half of them applied. The key to the survey is Renata tells us all the time, practically all these grants rely on income level, low income level in order to get these grants. So this expansion of the River Road water service there has been withdrawn because the survey came back that the income levels were too high. So what I have-- what I have suggested, or what I am suggesting, if the other two commissioners would like to get into this, is that we actually try to do our own survey, or at least get the information from Region Six as to who they sent it out to, what information they got back, and start first by analyzing that information against the-- get the help of the assessor's office to figure out first what the property values of these couple hundred homes are, because I believe in that area that I'm familiar with, I don't think the income level should be as high as their survey projected. I know there's some, you know, there's some well-off people in that area, but the big chunk of it, I think, are lower income, but they can just go by a survey. So it's a Region Six project, but if it's all right with the other commissioners, I'd like to ask our staff to request the information from Region Six of the survey, analyze their survey, involve the assessor's office and maybe even the tax office in trying to assist us to figure what we believe are more accurate, and it's because I don't believe that the income level is accurate. What we believe is more accurate, and then if we get that information, take it back to Region Six and get them to reapply for that Small Cities Block Grant. That's a suggestion. It's open for discussion. Bill, do you have anything?
No, I totally agree with you, Eldon. I'm surprised that that area exceeds the income level. I know the income level, I think, is about $18,000 a year, but I would tend to think, at least I'm inclined to believe, that the lack of participation or turning in of the information caused that to skew and be higher than what it normally would be.
Tom?
No, no, I agree. I think we need to get clarification on that and get better information to them, because sometimes the state and the county do not agree on assessments.
Mm-hmm. I get a motion. We go ahead and proceed on this and try to restore this River Road Small City Block Grant.
I so move to reconsider and follow the process that Eldon Callen has recommended.
Check it.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Discussion, award--
Here's a question.
Pardon?
One question on that. That's for this year's funding. Correct?
Yeah, we're gonna get the information for this, but it's too late to apply. We want to try to get the information this year to have them reapply next year, because they won't reapply unless we can come up with some sort of-- otherwise, it would be a waste of time. Proof that what I believe is the income levels are low enough in that area, they just didn't have the total information.
Okay, Region Six has asked that the commission adopt this resolution withdrawing this year's Small Cities Block Grant application.
Oh, that's right. We gotta do that, too. We gotta go ahead and-- I guess I got the cart before the horse. I was loading the cart, but yeah. Well, why don't you read this? What brought that second part about was they asked us to pass this resolution because of the high income level. So I have Diane to read that resolution.
Whereas the Montague County Commission submitted 2014 Small Cities Block Grant application for $1,500,000 to aid in the funding of the River Road PSD Water System Upgrade Project. Whereas the low to moderate income for Small Cities Block Grant eligibility is 51%. Whereas the River Road PSD project did not qualify based on U.S. Census data. And whereas River Road PSD and Region Six Planning and Development Council conducted an income survey to determine eligibility based on income survey responses. And whereas the results of the income survey identified the low to moderate income of the project area to be 46.75%, whereas the low percentage disqualified the eligibility of the project for the Small Cities Block Grant program. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Montague County Commission requests the West Virginia Development Office that its 2014 Small Cities Block Grant application be withdrawn from consideration.
So based on the survey, we have to approve the withdrawal. I think we have no choice because we have no proof otherwise, because this effort, the other effort that I requested, we won't be able to complete it in time, but I want to start it now so that we try to get this restored next year. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I got it out of order.
That's all right. I reluctantly move forward on this resolution.
All right, I'll second it. I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
In that information that we requested, could we also see if it's possible, they had the data to submit to us of why it didn't make it, so we could then be able to compare what we had?
Yeah, that was part of my request.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
So we start with getting all their current data--
Great, and then we'd be able--
And then we take it from there by going to the tax office and the assessor's office and work it from there.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Discussion, award, a bid for Montview Pavilion and Utilities. Who's doing that?
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Doyle.
Do I discuss it, or you just want me to tell you what happened?
Well--
Montview put this packet together, and they did a great job and made it so easy to go over yesterday in a meeting, and this packet is all three contractors who bid the project, and they went down and did spreadsheets of different colors, and it was so easy to go through. They put down who left what out and everything. So we're here to ask for a recommendation to award the bid to Canal Stone for $3,338,454.3. And also, we would like to return all-- have Janet to return all the bid bonds and performance bonds back to the two months' successful bidder.
Before we move, do you want to explain why, even though that's not the lowest, but why the other two have problems?
Canal Stone was low.
Canal Stone is low.
Oh, I thought, well, the other one I thought was missing. Okay.
Now, Canal Stone is low bid by over $300,000.
Oh, okay, okay, because there was some stuff missing from the other ones, too.
Yeah, but that's nothing that was just-- we did the spreadsheet so we could see what was not incomplete on the other ones that was complete on the one.
Okay, I move Canal Stone for that amount.
And also to--
And to release the bonds back to the other companies.
Check it.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. I just need to call Brian Gallagher to get this moved.
Okay, let him know. All right. Do we have any new business?
No.
I actually do.
You have new business?
Yes. I would like to make a suggestion, and since the sheriff is here and he doesn't know about it, and then place it on our work session for next week, so I appreciate that you're here. I would like to consider an old-fashioned solution to the mild-ground traffic problem. I would like to recommend the sheriff to consider a deputy at the airport intersection for roughly 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock to direct traffic, but I would also like us to consider contacting the Morgantown City Police to see if we could work in assistance, and maybe we could alternate something like that, and try it on a monthly basis, on a one-month basis, being that the traffic is really causing serious problems and it's backing all the way up, you know, not like to the roundabout, but also down the road, the darks, too. So I'm wondering, since we do such a good job moving them out during a football game, what would it be like if we could expend or expand one of our deputies to do basically old-fashioned, trying to move the traffic, and see if that works at all? And again, I would like to put it on next week's work session. If you could come back and say yea or nay, and give us some ideas, but I'd also see, would you be willing also to contact the city police, since it's right at the intersection of city and county, and maybe we could work something out? Again, I don't know what the answer is, but I want to throw that as an idea. And if you want to discuss, all generally, do you have--
Yeah, it's something that we have looked at before, because we know the mild-ground has always been a major traffic problem, much like the Boulevard was before they widened it and put in after lanes. The problem there is not just the Hartman Run intersection. You can pull traffic through the Hartman Run intersection going down Easton Hill. However, you have a light at the bottom of Easton Hill, a four-way or three-way stop there, which creates a problem. And then going, now, if they're going north on 119, no problem. If they're going south on 119, or heading, going up to 857, then you have two more lights up there that you have to deal with. So it's not just because of the traffic coming on to the mild-ground, it's backing up at all those other lights because the lights aren't in sequential order. So--
I have a question.
Yes, or Bill?
Has anyone ever asked if, and this might be the application for it, for example, if we had an officer, say, at the Hartman Run, mild-ground intersection, but that officer would have control for the light at the bottom of Easton Hill, as well as being where they're located at? Do we know that if there's remote capabilities for any of the lights?
There are remote capabilities, Bill, but they're only at the intersections. They're power boxes at each intersection where a traffic light is, so that an officer-- we have keys to those boxes, and we can operate the boxes manually, but you have to be at that particular intersection to do that.
It would be interesting if there was some way they could convert so that we would have remote capabilities, because I think that that might address some issues if one officer could have the right timing with, say, the top of Easton Hill with the bottom of Easton Hill.
I can check with Larry Weaver at the DOH to see if that's even a possibility. I've never known them to do it, but that doesn't mean they might not, might be able to do it.
Yeah, I just thought that might be worth checking into.
Yeah, I'll give them a call today and find out, see if they can do that.
Right, and also, the reason why I'm also the city, because where the motorcycle shop is, and down there, is a city property. I was just wondering, it's a city quote-county problem, and with the growth of the county and the city, especially the county, I mean, it looks like they may not resolve that intersection for two to three years. It's only gonna compound, so I was just wondering if there were any other options we could look at, and again, they're temporary options to try and do this, so, and again, if next week is not good, if you need a couple weeks, that's fine, but I'd like to at least throw it out and see, since there is a real concern and an interest, and see if there's anything we could do.
Yeah, like you may have a little bit of time--
Yeah, why don't you take some time? That's fine, yes, if that's okay, and then if you could come back--
Yeah, we can set it on work, but we're not making decisions. We're just setting up for work session.
If you can review it and then talk to the chief, and I guess we'll send the-- should we-- okay, how about if we also, if he talks to chief, if we send a letter to the mayor and city council, the city manager, just saying what we were proposing, and hopefully they could help become involved in the solution.
Yeah, we could invite them as well.
Do I need a motion for that letter?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Just setting up work session.
Yeah, Bill, do you have any other suggestions on that, because I know we did talk about it.
Not right now. You know, I feel confident that the sheriff will come back with a pretty good analysis of that situation.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, we'll do that in the future. Any other new businesses? None? Okay, reports from elected officials. Another business. Now, I'll start with the mayor.
I have a problem.
Yes, sir?
On the River Road Small City Block Grant. Who makes application for that?
Region Six.
Region Six makes the application?
Yeah, the Investment and Development Board.
And when they--
I think you sure are on it, Diane.
I'm on Region Six, yeah, but I didn't, I wasn't sure about how they went about one. Did they send flyers out or letters out to people?
I was told they sent letters out.
Letters?
They sent letters out, and then we got less than half of them back. And see, my theory is based on the fact that people that are well-off may have a little bit more time, and therefore, they would bother to send the letter back.
Right.
Lower-income people might not bother to send that. And the other issue was, you know, they talked about phone, call, landline, but you got that problem, too, because most of the low-income people, if they have a phone, oh, they have a cellphone. They don't have a--
I wonder what kind of information River Road itself has.
Yeah.
As far as the amount of people--
Well, they would have cut, or Region Six would consult with River Road. So that's what basically our motion is, is to find out what they did, how they did it, and if we could get a read from the, with working with the actual values of the properties and stuff, sort of give us a read that may justify going door to door. That's basically the direction--
Is it based on the property value or the MHA?
It's based on the income, but I'm saying, if you start with the value, some of the properties, other properties, value are not that great. And also, you could determine whether they're Class II or the rental properties. If they're rental properties, the income levels might be lower as well. All in all, it's gonna take some money, which Region Six didn't want to spend, but one of my thoughts is, if we feel strongly that the income level, because we're only off by a little bit, I mean, we're not way off, they're very close. It might justify going door to door and just to make up that difference of less than 1% off, it's less than 1%, a fraction of a percent off from qualifying.
Well, I'd just like to say, once again, I'm impressed by you guys' thought process. A lot of counties don't have that concern.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Sheriff, you have anything?
Couple things. On September 14th, 15th, 16th, attended the auditor's training. It's annual training for sheriffs and tax deputies, and it was held at the Marriott in Charleston, and good meeting, good conference, good training they usually have. And a couple of things that came out that came out in our meeting, the sheriff's meeting, that we may have to look at in the future, is, I don't know if you know what the IRP system is, it's Interoperating Radio Program, that was operated, it was, the pilot project was done by Marion Mon and Harrison Counties several years ago. was done by Marionmont and Harrison Counties several years ago. It was basically to get away from a legacy radio system which had to use repeaters in the cars and on our tower sites. Get away with that and made communications a lot better in between law enforcement, fire departments, EMS, and folks like that, so that we could all interconnect. What we are looking at now, and it's in the early stages, the Interoperable Radio Project Board has now been formed, and our understanding is it's being headed up by the state police now, and they are looking at funding sources for the program. So we don't know what they're focusing on, at least at this point, they don't appear to be focusing on one thing over another, one avenue over another. But one of the things that we discussed in our sheriff's meeting was that we know in Ohio, they have basically the same radio system that we're talking about here. And what they do in Ohio is they charge users twenty-five dollars per radio per month to be on the system. And we originally started this, back then it's called Project Twenty-Five, we had a grant, which is a little over five million dollars, to get everything off and running and make sure that it was going to operate the way we thought it should, and it did. Well, now there's no grant money available for anything else or to keep the system sustained. So this group now is going to be looking for funding, so I just want to put that out there so in case they come to county commissions or municipalities and say, you know, you need to kick in some money, this is what they're talking about, is operational expenses. One of the things that didn't cost us any money when we originally did the system was the state EMS board let us piggyback on their microwave system to operate the IRP program, which didn't cost us anything. So that was great, we didn't have to, you know, reinvent the wheel. But now they're getting into upgrade of equipment, they're getting into new tower sites and things like that, which are pretty expensive. I know when we originally put up tower sites, they're around three hundred thousand for a large tower site. So that's what they're looking at, so to start passing information on. Also looking at probably, as Elton Proppin knows this, in nineteen seventy-one, when the Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Code was enacted, there has been virtually no changes in that code for all those years. So we're working with the State Deputy Sheriff's Association to do some civil service code reform and take out some of the antiquated codes and maybe adapt some of the existing codes, so we're looking at that. And finally, after, or lastly, my presentation, after five years of serving as the secretary for the West Virginia Sheriff's Association, at this last meeting, I was elected as vice president of the State Sheriff's Association. So I'm pretty proud to hold that position and represent our county.
Congratulations. Congratulations, we really appreciate that. And I appreciate going down the EOC meeting for the West Virginia Association counties. You know, I just came back from County Commissioners Association. That went extremely well. We appreciated Patty and Steve Kendall appearing, and I think it was a very, it ended up as I hoped it would, a very positive, we are counties, we didn't get into chair, but we pretty much got to, got close to it. And we, and I'm looking very positive to the direction that we, as county officials, need to go, because as, as you know, I've said repeatedly, the answers to the county's problems do not exist in Charleston, they exist in us. So I was pleased that we're working together, and I think that the good working relationship that you and the commissioners and the other county officials here have in Montague County is starting to rub off on other counties. At least I saw that at the North County Commission Association. And I appreciate your continued leadership, not only here in Montague County, but throughout the, throughout the state, by your willingness to serve in those various capacities, it really brings a benefit and recognition to our county. And thank you. Wrong side, you have anything for Greg about four?
No, sir.
No?
Nope.
Not one more thing?
Nothing, nothing.
Zero thing? And you have anything?
No.
Bobby?
No.
Jammy, you got one thing?
One thing.
Yes, sir.
I just want to remind her that our hostel has this waste collection, it's this Saturday from eight to eleven at the Mugg property off of Green Bag Road, and just want everybody to know that it's going on this Saturday.
Great, very good. Reports from commissioners. Bill, you have anything?
One thing, I hope to be there in person at our meeting next week.
Great.
All right, we look forward to seeing you.
Sure, we're looking forward to it. Thank you, Bill. Tom, you have anything?
Yeah, three positive things. First, I just want to remind everyone that Friday is the last day to get your application in to name the baseball team. And then they will decide on ten names, and the next week we will choose, we'll be able to vote on the ten names. And I do not have any idea what any of the names are, so this is all being done, so if you still have, you still have time to name the team. Second, I was fortunate to be at the grand opening representing Eldon and Bill at the College Park Apartments, and these apartments are done by American Campus Communities from an individual who worked here, Bill Ballas, who's now the CEO, president, lives in Texas, and is the largest firm building college dorms in the country, and he continues to build. He built the honors dorm, Lincoln Dorm, and now this, and it's just a first-class facility, and I think it's really up the bar for other developments. And then he told me that the Sunnyside Commons, which he had bought going up University Avenue, which he told us he would consider, because of all the growth, he is now going to be starting in May, it looks like, knocking it down and building more first-class apartments. So first-class living dorms, it's not, it's nothing like what, Eldon, you and I used, it is unbelievable what you now have and can live. The final thing I'm going to say, and it's probably never said before in a county commission meeting, is Happy Rosh Hashanah, or it's Happy New Year, Gudiyanteh is another way that we say it, so Happy Rosh Hashanah to everyone. It starts at sundown tonight. It's a Jewish.
Excuse my ignorance.
It's a Jewish New Year.
It's a New Year?
It's a Jewish, it's the Jewish New Year. I knew you were going to say that. It's fifty-seven, now fifty-seven something.
Fifty-seven?
Something, and I apologize.
Fifty-seven hundred something?
Yeah. Fifty-seven, I apologize, I should have looked at the actual number, but I thought it'd be something different to inform that we have a lot of group of different people in this community.
Is it all right to have a New Year's party?
Oh, yes, it is. It's a very positive celebration. It's a very good positive celebration. But then in Morgantown, if you're a university student, you have every reason to celebrate. So it's amazing how many Jewish students we suddenly have for one night.
Is that right? I'll join with you, Tom. I really don't have, I sort of have a continuation of, we adopted our legislative priorities and actually, I don't think there was any of the other elected official priorities we didn't support. I think we supported all. One of the ones that I found was interesting was so many, and Mike Wolf is not here, so many of the people, so many of the counties are having problems as we do of keeping nine-one-one operating. It's a highly stressful job, it's, it takes a toll on people. And one of the things that they, I guess, is coming forth, and I don't know if it was presented to the sheriff or not, it was presented to us about the, about the putting the nine-one-one operators, allowing them to go in the EMS retirement system. That was, actually it came out of Canola County, I think, first, and there was a group that was meeting together, and I, and I thought that, I thought that was rather appropriate, you know, I mean, and I just, I just get surprised sometimes as to all these different systems that exist out there, what can we all be in one? I know the best one is the judicial system, surprise, 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 their retirement system, I mean, that's better than any of them, you know? It just, it just surprises me that, you know, that something so logical. Nine-one-one and EMS, they work side by side, they work together, they're under the same sort of stresses. Matter of fact, being nine-one-one, by not being on-site, actually, in some cases, I think would be more stressful to not know what's going on, but know you're trying to help whatever you could do. So, so we've adopted our legislative priorities, of course, we'll have, we'll have our follow-up meetings and all, and then we have our upcoming Community Leadership Academy the end of this week, and then the starter next week is our board to adopt all, to adopt all these legislative priorities from Association County, it's the following, the fifth, is it?
Fifth, sixth, and seventh.
Fifth, sixth, and seventh, good. Yeah, okay. That's all I have. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Are you, are you a student?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why don't you identify yourself for?
My name is Tristan Webster. I am currently enrolled with the School of Media at West Virginia University, however, I'm not here for a school of media class, I'm here for a political science class. It was required in my course to attend a public meeting, I could have done this, a school board meeting, or I forget the third thing, but this was the only thing I could fit in my schedule.
You should have said just the one you wanted.
Yeah, sure.
We're the shortest one, too.
Yeah, I'd like to change that statement.
There you go. Well, glad to have you, glad to have you, really much. Okay, any further comments from the public?
Another student.
Oh, we got another student there? Yes, sir, who are you?
Justin Holstein, I'm a geography student, and like he said, there's a requirement to get to one of the thorough commission meetings, be it this one or one of the other, like zoning or.
City council meetings.
Yeah, traffic.
This is more fun.
Yeah, it's a lot shorter, too. Lot shorter. Thank you for coming.
So you have any, have any comments, you have anything?
I actually wanted to ask, I just wanted to get the name of the person, you, Mr. Bloom, you were talking about the gentleman that helped raise up campus parks, Lincoln Hall, and also honors, what was his name?
Bill Ballas. He was an RA at Summit Hall, then he became the manager at Summit Hall, and ironically, when we met yesterday, we informed everyone that it's because of him, he was my first campaign manager in nineteen eighty-seven when I ran for city council. So when I turn around and people want to blame me for doing something, I blame him because he's the one that got me elected.
Can you spell the last name, please?
And it's the largest college dorm company in the country, and it's first-class.
What, the name of the company?
American Campus Communities, ACC they go by.
Okay, glad to have you. I have a motion adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Check it.
I have a motion, a second on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.